Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Boscombe Borough Council's Planning Committee. My name is councillor David Middleton. I am the chairman of this committee. And councillor David Scoot on my right is the vice-chairman. Before we move to the agenda, we'll invite our officers supporting this meeting to introduce themselves.
Lisa Davis, senior legal adviser.
Phil Norman, assistant director for planning.
Abby Marwood, group manager for planning and development.
Charlie Parry, senior planning officer.
Can you hear me now? No? Yes? No? Wave? Iffy? It's me, is it? More closer than that? Okay. Can you hear? So moving on to housekeeping rules, the restroom facilities are available on this floor for the ladies and halfway down the main stairwell for gentlemen. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, officers will escort everyone to the nearest safety point in the rear car park. Please ensure when you are addressing this meeting that you do so through the microphone system at all times. Members of the public are free to leave the meeting at any time and our planning support officers will escort you downstairs. And finally, please be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Anyone who is deemed to breach this requirement will be warned and asked to refrain, and if the behaviour persists, they will be asked to leave the meeting. So, part one, to receive apologies for absence and notification of any substitutions.
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies from councillor Rylott with councillor Evans substituting. We have apologies from councillor Pierpoint with no substitute. And we have apologies from councillor Brown with councillor Danny substituting.
Okay, thank you. To sign the minutes of the last meeting held on the 14th of January 2025, do I have committee's agreement to sign these? Before we move to individual declarations of interest in respect of any item on this agenda, I will ask Lisa to give the standing declarations.
Thank you, chairman. For public information, I've confirmed that standing declarations of interest will be recorded within the minutes for this meeting for all members of this committee who are also members of Lincolnshire County Council, the South East Lincolnshire Joint Strategic Planning Committee, and representatives of the internal drainage boards.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the committee have any further declaration of interest to make in respect of any item on this agenda, please? Councillor, yeah. Welbury?
Yes, agenda item five is actually me, so I shall leave the room at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Dorian?
Thank you, chair. Yeah, in respect of planning application B240515, under 2.3, I live in a property listed building on Spillsborough that's mentioned in the committee. So I'm just clearing that. However, I have had discussions with officers about this planning application, so I will recuse myself for that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just myself, I also live on Spillsborough in a listed building, so it will have no effect on the outcome of my decision. Have we any written questions from members of the public?
They're in on, chairman.
That concludes the preliminary items, and we'll now move to part two of the agenda and address the planning applications for determination. Our first item of business today is planning application B240415 on page 13 of the agenda, and will be presented by our senior planning officer, Mr Charlie Parry. Over to you.
Thank you, chair. Before we get on to the individual applications, I just wanted to touch quickly on the cumulative impact of all three battery energy storage applications that have come before the committee. The map on screen shows the area of Bicker Fen and the recent developments that have been having there. Centrally, in the green shaded area, is the Bicker Fen substation. To the left, in the blue, is a solar farm development. The yellow shaded one on the left as well is the first item on this agenda for a battery energy store. The green offshoot, if you move more centrally, is the second item on this agenda. The red shaded area is another solar development. And the purple in the top right is the final battery energy store on this agenda. You'll see to the left is the North Cateeven District Council and to the south is South Holland District Council. I just wanted to make it clear that the local planning authority have no objections to all three of these applications in terms of their cumulative impact. The Highways Authority have stated that there wouldn't be a cumulative impact on the highway network. And if all three were to be approved and built at the same time, there would not be an adverse impact on the area. We just wanted to make that clear. Moving into, oh, sorry, I've just got photos of the area to show that there is the recent developments here in terms of wind farm developments, the electricity pylons, and the substation. And moving on to the first application, this is for a battery energy storage system, associated infrastructure, and B and G improvements. My recommendation is to approve this application subject to conditions, and it has been called before the committee for clarity, and also due to two third-party objections and from the parish council. The site is located to the west of the substation and is immediately adjacent to the South Forty Foot Drain. As mentioned earlier, to the north and north-east of there is the Vicarage Strove solar development. The access to this place is not yet constructed, making some site visits quite difficult. But this would be where the access is, and you can see to the right is the entrance to the solar development area. Plan on screen is a general overview of the development, showing where the battery energy store will be located away from the South Forty Foot Drain. There are improvements there in terms of the wild planting, the hedge you can see that separates at the L shape, as well as a hedge to the south. Looking at the application more closely, you'll see the batteries are to be located in the southeast corner with the transformers moving further north, and then the associated infrastructure to the side going around following the L shape. There's planting along the western boundary with wildfire meadows. To the south, hedging, and to the north will also be enclosed. There would be a security fence, which is the purple lines that you can see on the screen, which will enclose the development. I just wanted to briefly state that the proposal is covered by local policy in terms of policy one, by providing an environmental and community benefit, as well as policy 31, which refers to climate change and renewable energy. There's a lot of writing on screen here, but these are the main policies from the MPPF, which are considered to be relevant to this application. Paragraph 161 in the MPPF states that the planning system should support the transition to net zero 2050. But the key point in this policy is that it states it should support renewable and low carbon energy and associated infrastructure, with this falling under the latter. 168 also states, well, the main aspect from this is that there is not a requirement for the applicant to demonstrate the need for this application. It is a supported type of proposal. Therefore, the principle of this development is supported both nationally and locally, and the main considerations to be considered are how its impact on the area, as well as the other material considerations have been considered. So taking a view of the site, this is looking towards the South Forty Foot Drain from the southeastern corner. And this is looking north-east from the site with the wind turbines in the background. So the first aspect is how the proposal impacts the character and appearance of the area, including its impact on ecology, B and G, and agricultural land. The picture on screen shows the elevations, I know it's a bit difficult to see, that the elevations will project above the fence and some of the landscaping, but it's considered that this will be seen within the context of the area and the B and G. And that helps mitigate the views of it and breaks at the scene and introduces new habitats to a countryside location that aren't previously there. It does result in the loss of agricultural land, but the permission is for a 40-year period with it having to be decommissioned after, which there is a condition that secures this. On screen is the submitted construction route. This is a key aspect of this application with concern being raised about Cowbridge Road, but ultimately, the main concern about avoiding Bicker in the construction period. As you can see, this avoids Bicker, which is just to the bottom right of the screen. It uses a private haul road from the south. It does use Cowbridge Road, but Highways have confirmed that they have no objections to this. There are other developments currently using this road as well. We have it placed in conditions that require potential improvements, surveys of the road, and aspects such as that. Another main concern has been health and safety of the site. Again, there's a lot of writing on screen. This is just a list of all the legislation, compliance requirements, and regulations that they have to accord with in terms of fire safety. They have set out a fire safety management plan. The site can be controlled remotely and shut down if needed. But again, this sort of falls outside of planning. They have to comply with these regulations and make sure that the site is safe in this regard. There's been no objections in terms of flood risk and potential pollution from that aspect. And finally, I just want to touch on the conditions. The conditions have been put in place to help control this application and further reduce any impacts. A drainage scheme is to be submitted prior to the commencement. The B and G standard plans are attached for that 10% increase, which this application does achieve. Public highway improvements, cable routing, decommissioning of the site and restoration, the fence being implemented prior to it first being brought into use, which was requested by environmental health, who also have no objections to this. A scheme of archaeology work to be carried out. There have also been some minor requests from the agents with regards to the conditions. These largely relates to updating the words or updating the plans, and are not considered to be materially different to what's already on there. It is noted that councillor Cantwell has requested conditions on this application in terms of a joint traffic route and as well as community engagement. The submitted traffic route is considered to be acceptable for this one. We've had no objections from Highways. They're using a purpose-built private haul road to the south, and we do not feel that we can condition the community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So now we move on to our speaker on this side, to Mr Julie Barrow, who is the agent for the applicant, Mr Sang, who will be sitting alongside Miss Barrow to assist with any questions which may be tabled following the representation. Please remain seated following the representation for any questions from the committee. Over to you.
Thank you, chair, and good morning. My name is Julie Barrow. I'm an associate director at StanTech, the planning consultant for the applicant FRV Power Tech. FRV set up in 2006 and is an established global independent power producer and pioneer in renewable energy generation. FRV was one of the early entrants in battery storage in the UK in 2020, and they have three battery storage projects aggregating to 280 megawatts, developed and owned by themselves in the UK. You have in front of you today three planning applications for battery energy storage systems, and we thank the case officer for his hard work in getting all three applications to this committee. FRV have been proactively engaging with the LPA and the county council through a planning performance agreement since January 24. Scheme has evolved as a result of advice received on matters such as highway safety, ecology, and drainage. FRV has also carried out extensive engagement with local councillors, the parish council, and residents. Battery storage has a key role to play in achieving net zero by 2050 and a clean power grid by 2030 by managing imbalances in the intermittent supply and demand of renewable energy. Without sufficient storage capacity, when energy demand exceeds supply, the deficit is balanced through fossil fuels or importing energy from neighbouring countries. When energy supply exceeds demand, the government pays curtailment costs to turn off generators. This cost over £1 billion last year and is expected to increase to £3 billion by 2030. FRV's scheme has been designed to complement and support the renewable energy schemes in the Bicker Fen area. The report from your officer comprehensively addresses all material planning considerations and correctly concludes that the proposed development complies with all relevant planning policies. I'll touch briefly on some of these considerations. The footprint of the best covers just 3.16 hectares with the remaining 7.19 hectares landscaping and biodiversity enhancement, resulting in a B and G of around 112%, well above the mandatory requirement of 10%. The application is for a temporary period of 40 years, at which point the site will be returned to its original state. FRV is engaged extensively with the Highways Authority, and they will complete highway improvement works prior to commencement and conduct repair and maintenance works post-construction. It is unlikely that the three best projects would be constructed at the same time, but the Highways Authority has confirmed the cumulative impact of this would be acceptable. FRV is engaged with the Fire and Rescue Service, who have confirmed that proposed development meets NFCC guidance in terms of access, water supply, spacing, and design, and they have no objection. The drainage strategy demonstrates how surface water can be safely released into the wider drainage network. The LLFA and EA have no objections. In conclusion, the proposal is clearly supported by national, local planning policy. There are no objections on technical or cumulative grounds from any statutory consultees. The benefits of the scheme weigh heavily in favour of granting approval, as recommended by the case officer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. Does any member of this committee wish to ask Miss Barrow any questions in respect of her representation? Oh, sorry. Not questions, but clarifications.
Thanks, chair. Yeah, Miss Barrow, I'd just like to ask you about the community. Did you mention community engagement that you'd undertaken with local residents? Is that correct? What form did that take?
So FRV carried out public consultation events where local residents were invited to those. We had a communications company assisting with that, so they were also on hand via email, telephone, to answer any questions, and we did answer quite a few questions through that process, so.
Thank you, Miss Barrow. I think you can return to your seat now. Our next speaker is councillor James Cantwell, who is the ward member for this application. Councillor Cantwell, please remain seated once you have concluded your representation.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, councillors. I would also like to thank Charlie Parry and the planning team for their hard work on Bicker Fen. I know there are quite a few projects coming, and they're busy with those. Although I'm here to speak about B24/0415, my comments do apply to all the proposed BES sites and energy facilities in the Fen, and particularly to those projects also watching on YouTube as well. I would like to thank the projects for their engagement so far and to those who have altered their plans to cater for residents' needs. Projects should be aware that communities in Bicker Fen have serious doubts about the development of Bicker Fen and, in my view, the overdevelopment. While I'm not here to speak against these applications, as both me and my residents understand, they will get through one way or another. I am here to encourage projects to work together going forward on areas of traffic management and enforcement. I am also here to say to the battery storage sites that there are serious doubts about the health and safety of these facilities. If a serious incident ever occurred, it would be catastrophic for our residents, waterways, and wildlife. I urge all these projects to continue to engage with local stakeholders, allowing scrutiny of health, of health, safety, emergency, planning, and risk mitigation plans you have. Only through continued long-term communication can good neighbourly relations endure for decades to come. While we are not happy about the Fen, residents, myself, and the parish council want to work with you to ensure the Fen gets the support it deserves. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you for that, councillor. Does any member of this committee wish to... Clarification? From councillor Cantwell? Councillor Broughton?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like councillor Cantwell just to explain what it means by this application will get through one way or another.
I discussed this with the parish councils and the residents, and they felt there was not enough to get this application rejected, however much they disagreed with it. I do think if this committee refused these applications, they could very easily win on appeal. I don't think there's enough grounds to get them refused, so that's what I would mean by that.
Thank you, councillor Cantwell. I think at this time, do we have to ask you to leave? Would you like to comment on anything there as an officer? No? So we'll open the meeting up to deliberation. Anybody got any comments to make? Councillor Woodlift?
Thank you, chairman. I suppose one thing to come to mind is, of course, the raise concern on the base of the construction traffic uses Cowbridge Road as unsuitable and requests the use of a purpose-built top-tier road off the A17. Obviously, these are the roads around here are not redesigned for heavy traffic. Most of these country roads are narrow and so on, and it is a concern about the amount of heavy traffic that would be travelling down these roads. If anybody's walking down these roads, walking dogs and so on, they could be at risk in this traffic. So I think there is a concern here about the use of, you know, country roads to carry heavy-duty vehicles. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Dorian?
Thank you. Yes, Chair, I'd like to ask Charlie, you mentioned the archaeology. And I see the archaeologists requested some trenches, Doug. Is there any indication there was a previous settlement there in any way?
The area is high in archaeology findings. The previous developments of both solar farms have undercarried this work. And there's been some findings, I mean, that goes straight to them, but there have been cases. So I think it would be indicated by the trial trenching at that time where we get further information.
And thank you, Chair. And also, you mentioned with the fire risk that that can be controlled remotely. Would you just elaborate on that for us, please?
Yeah, from my understanding of the applications is that the site can be shut down remotely. In any case, there's systems in place for that. I don't know how the specifics of them work, but the whole site can be shut down remotely. It doesn't need someone on there to physically go in and turn everything off.
Just one last point to councillor Woodlift's point. You did mention in your presentation there would be highway improvements. Is that right? What would they, how would they take a form on site?
So this is covered under condition 13. So we basically require them to do an evaluation of the road before, and then any improvements, which I think in this case were passing places to help obviously improve and let the construction traffic pass. I just wanted to clarify as well that although Cowbridge Road is a country road, it's not in the best of conditions. There's clear visibility down there. It is a straight road, and Highways have not objected to this at all. And it does use a purpose-built private road from the south, not from the north.
Councillor Austin?
Thank you, chairman. I thought I knew the area very well. I know where, what was the haul road off the A17 for the wind farm? I know the A52 well, but I can't sort of visualize Cowbridge Road. Unfortunately, the map on page 15 isn't perhaps the best I've ever seen. Can you indicate me, please, Charlie, where Cowbridge Road exactly, while it comes off the A17 or the A52, please?
So Cowbridge Road doesn't come directly off either of them. It's closer into Bicker Fen. We're just trying to load up the map here. When I first showed the map that had the overbrief of the area, the red highlighted part was one of the solar developments. To the west, to the east of that is where Cowbridge Road is, which is where there are two, if I'm not mistaken, residential properties. Yeah, so it's sort of where the substation is, there's a road at the top of that that loops round east and then slightly south, and that's where Cowbridge Road is.
May I ask, make a second point? Again, I scoured online actually to try and see what one of these things was going to look like. Do you have an image or not that we could be shown, please?
I did put the elevations of the application on screen, which we're trying to get back at the minute, but yes.
I'll await that then with interest. Thank you.
Okay, I think the plan is to come back to this. We're trying to get some information on the screen. Are there any more queries or deliberations? Are there any more, any more queries or deliberations? Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just on page 29, if we go to impact on health and safety, I think 0.7, 0.56, as mentioned, the proposal includes a SAD scheme which will also be secured via a condition. I would like to know what sort of condition. And then it follows up, this should include measures that prevent the contamination of the surface and ground. And reading these projects, about this project, we will go back after 40 years, I may not be here anyway, so 40 years to return to agricultural land. I don't know how far the contamination will go if there is any contamination, and what's the sort of condition we have there, if you may answer that question? Thank you.
So condition five of the report covers the surface water drainage scheme that's to be submitted. Their flood risk assessment does cover matters such as this and has sort of an outlined strategy for what will be submitted. This is essentially just getting that plan prior to the commencement of work. So hopefully that answers the first question. And then with regards to the restoration, as mentioned, not all of the land has been developed. A lot of it is for biodiversity net gain improvements, and there's no indication that there will be contamination of this land, and it will be able to be restored to its previous state, as mentioned, so by the speaker and by myself.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you. Is there, is there are any ways of checking the contamination on yearly basis or three years basis just to prevent it from happening? Thank you.
And I mean, that can be covered through a contaminated land condition, but ultimately it will be controlled through the conditions of the surface water and through their indication and details that they've submitted in their flood risk assessment.
Can we come back to councillor Austin's discussion now?
Yeah, just to come back to that, on screen, the red shaded area, as mentioned, that's the solar farm, and immediately east of that is where Cowbridge Road is located. That's for that clarification, and moving along to... I understand it's difficult to see, but this is what the elevations are like for this area. The battery stores are contained in containers. These are the transformers that you will be seeing, and the other ancillary works such as anything associated with it are also in the container sort of style. Yeah.
How high are they roughly?
Well, the security fence there is at 2.5 metres, if I'm not mistaken, and with the transformers projecting at higher, but from the top of my head, I can't remember.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, when the wind turbines were passed back in 2004, nobody could foresee what Bicker Fen was going to look like now. I was chairman of the committee at the time when they was passed, and I don't think any of us could foresee everything that was going to be going on down there. When all said and done, it is now a north-south electric highway underneath all those pylons and everything else. The hall road up both ends of this are as good as we're going to get. Cowbridge Road, we're going to get the extra passing places, which will be an upgrade to what it is now. Black Slough Main Sewer runs down alongside of that. Black Slough Pumping Station is also down the bottom of there. So there's no real drainage issues whatsoever. So I'm happy to propose the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bedford. Do we have a second? Okay, yeah, councillor Suwicky. Any more discussion? Okay. So that is carried, that application is carried as per the officer's recommendation. 41 of the agenda. And again, our senior planning officer, Mr Charlie Parry, will present this item.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this application is for a battery energy storage system. It is located southeast of the substation, and it's called before the committee due to two third-party objections, comments from the local ward member, and an objection from the parish council. My recommendation is approval, subject to conditions. Site plan indicates where it is. It's directly southeast of the substation and will be connected to it. The pictures here show the corner, so this is Vicarage Drove that runs sort of northeast alongside the substation. To the left is where the substation is, but it's screened by the existing hedging, and you can sort of see the access in the bottom right, which is where access to this proposal will be constructed. This photo shows that access and the current use of the... it's not this field that's in question. The access goes off to the left, but this is given indication of the current use of the site. The general arrangement of this one shows the battery containers towards the south, a transformer sort of north of that, and the associated infrastructure immediately adjacent. There's an attenuation pond proposed to the north, as well as the water tanks just south of that. As mentioned, the access goes off to the side, and it's not the field that you've seen previously. Again, I want to reiterate that this is supported both nationally and locally. They do not have to justify the need for this application, and principally, the application is acceptable. Therefore, the considerations of how its impact on the area have been mitigated, reduced and controlled. Moving on to this picture is a view from Vicarage Drove. It sort of gives an indication of how the site is currently screened. It's not the most visible site from the public realm. And this is submitted by the applicant, but gives a viewpoint from the south. To the right of the picture in the red is where is the approximate location of the site with the wind farm to the left of that and the substation. This gives an indication of the elevations of the battery containers. This is what they're contained within and what they look like. And this is the transformer elevations, similar to the previous application in the same style. For this application, the proposed construction route is to the north. It does not use Cowbridge Road, and it avoids Bicker. It uses the purpose-built private hall road from the A17. This was agreed after the parish council's objection, so they, so hopefully this nullifies their concerns, and it does not go through Bicker. It does, however, propose approximately 10 construction routes using the route to the south of the A52 for the larger vehicles that are required. Again, touching on flood risk, health and safety, there are a lot of regulations and requirements they have to comply with, and the same applies to this application. Looking at the plan more closely, there's the attenuation pond, there's also the water tanks on-site, and there's clear access for any vehicles needed on there if required. There are no objections on this matter in terms of flood risk, in terms of contamination, bio safety. And then briefly to run through the conditions, similarly to the previous application, it's for 40 years. It does achieve the 10% uplift in biodiversity, the creation of new habitats on-site in the country location. It utilizes the existing hedgerow to the north as well, which is supported by policies. There's, again, condition of the highways is to be considered, passing places and any improvements prior to the commencement, cable routing and the fence as required by environmental health. It's not directly near any residential properties. They're not within 100 metres of the site, and there's no concerns in that aspect. There's archaeology conditions required. There have been some requests to amendments, but again, these are correcting words or correcting plans, and they're not considered to be a material difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. We do have speakers on this application. Our first speaker is Mr Mark Cousins, who is speaking in support of the application. Could he be seated at the table, please, and remain there when you finish your representation?
Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal for the development of the battery energy storage system on a 10-acre site on our farm in Bicker. This project is vital for both our agriculture business and the wider energy needs of the region, and I'd like to explain why we believe it should be approved. The proposed site is currently used for cattle grazing and has not been used for crop production for over 100 years, owing to its lower classification as lower-grade agricultural land compared to the rest of the land on our farm. Importantly, only six acres of this land will be used for this project, with the remaining four acres retained for grazing. This remaining portion will connect to the larger grazing pasture, ensuring that the cattle continue to have sufficient space. In fact, the grass produced in that block of land already exceeds the requirements for that part of the cattle herd that grazes it. Therefore, this project will have minimal impact on the agricultural operations and will not compromise food production. Farming is becoming increasingly challenging due to fluctuating market prices, rising costs and the impact of climate change. To ensure the long-term sustainability of our business for our future generations, diversification is essential. The battery energy storage system provides an additional reliable revenue stream that reduces our dependence on the volatile agricultural sector. This diversification aligns with the national policy encouraging farms to integrate renewable energy and contribute to the UK's net zero carbon goals by enabling greater use of renewable energy. This project supports not only our farm, but the broader energy transition. We've designed this project with a focus on enhancing local biodiversity. A key feature will be the inclusion of the drainage pond, which will provide a habitat for amphibians, birds and insects. This pond will contribute to flood risk management while creating opportunities for local wildlife to thrive. Additionally, we plan to improve the hedgerows surrounding the site by planting native species and managing them sustainably. We'll create better corridors for pollinators, small mammals and small mammals, further supporting the local ecosystems. These measures demonstrate our commitment to balancing progress with environmental stewardship. This proposal represents the opportunity to make better grace, better use of the lower-grade agricultural land and safeguard the future of our farming business, as well as contributing to the UK's environmental goals with a minimal impact on the agriculture. I hope the planning panel will recognise the importance of this project and approve our application. Thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Has anybody got any clarifications for Mr Cousins? Our second speaker is Mr Ali Gill, who is the applicant. Mr Gill, please remain seated once you have concluded your representation.
Given the opportunity to present this project to the committee this morning. My name is Ali, and I represent AJR Renewables, the applicant. AJR is an experienced renewable energy developer with a track record of successfully developing over 50 renewable energy projects. This project is critical national infrastructure that will help in delivering both Boston District Council's climate change strategy, as well as the UK's more generally. Energy storage systems are an integral part of our action against climate change in facilitating the decarbonisation of the grid and ultimately in achieving net zero. They are also essential in achieving energy security in line with the government's new Clean Power 2030 Plan, as well as in keeping consumers' energy bills down. This scheme has been recommended for approval by your officer, recognising the fact that the scheme represents a sensitively designed, sustainable development with the benefits outweighing any negative impacts. The scheme has received just three local objections and zero objections from the statutory consultees, demonstrating the very limited impact on the local community and its surroundings. The scheme is ideally located in close proximity to Bicker Fen Substation, ensuring transmission losses are minimised and the scheme is best able to deliver its proposed benefits. Alongside the benefits of the BEZ themselves, significant biodiversity net gain will be achieved, thereby enhancing the biodiversity in the area through, among other things, hedgerow improvements and species-rich grassland planting, benefiting the wider ecosystem. Moreover, farming will be able to continue on the unused area of the field to the south, something which I'm sure, well, which I know now, the landowner has already elaborated on in his own words. One of the main concerns falling out of said local objections to the scheme was construction traffic. However, AJR has taken on board these concerns and amended our traffic management plan accordingly by routing construction traffic by two private hall roads in the area, the Tryton Knoll Hall Road from the A17 that's previously been mentioned, and the Engate Hall Road, in order to avoid traffic impact on the village of Bicker and its residents. The vast majority of traffic will be routed via the Tryton Knoll Hall Road, avoiding the local highway network around the village entirely. A very small proportion of abnormal load journeys, anticipated to be less than 10, will be routed via the Engate Hall Road and Cowbridge Road. AJR has agreement in principle from both Tryton Knoll, Engate and the relevant private landowners for the use of the hall roads and are progressing the legal documents at present. In summary, Vicarage Drove BEZ represents a critical piece of infrastructure in the country's future energy system, facilitating the further rollout of renewables, the decarbonisation electricity grid, and will make a significant contribution to the region's current under-supply and energy storage. The scheme has been sensitive to develop with a minimum impact on the local community and its surroundings, demonstrated through a distinct lack of local rejection to the scheme and a recommendation for approval from the local planning officer. As such, I urge the panel to follow suit and approve the scheme without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Gill. Direct in there. Has any member of the committee, any clarifications of Mr Gill? Councillor Woberry?
Just interested to know the lighting arrangements. Is it 24-hour lighting on the site? And just a little bit more information about, you know, light pollution, if you like?
Yeah, no, it certainly won't be 24 hours. It's typically sensor-designed, so it's only, the lighting is only triggered when someone is on-site doing maintenance. For the rest of the time, it will be under.
For the rest of the time, it will be unlit and yeah, no lighting will be required.
So if goodness forbid, there's intruders onto the site, would the lighting come on at that point or is it that kind of sensitive?
Yeah, if someone was walking around site, there would be.
And then you'd be alerted, I presume?
We'd be alerted, yeah. But the lighting is mainly there for maintenance purposes at night if there was an emergency, which is typically rare and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be routinely lit, to answer your question.
Another question, quick one. And fire, you know, typically in the past there've been issues, haven't there, with battery substations and what have you? I see you've got continuation pond and five water tanks. Have you arrived at that for fire suppression or what other, have you got in place in cases of fire?
The five water tanks represents two hundred and fifty thousand litres of onsite water storage, which is what the local fire, well, the National Fire Chief, Fire Chief Council's recommendation is, so that they have access to onsite water, provide peripheral cooling to the containers to keep them cool, to stop fire spreading, should there be an event in a particular container.
Yeah.
And the hope being that it would be localised to that particular container. We've also introduced six metre spacing as per the national guidance to avoid thermal runaway and the spread of the fire from the offending container to adjacent containers.
And is that automatic or does that have to actually be demand?
It's what.
If a fire actually.
Councillor Woberry, we're drifting off into the detail of design, which isn't really a planning aspect.
Just, you know, the fire suppression system worked, that was interesting. Do I ask the officers that then?
I'm sure you can.
Okay, thank you, thanks a lot.
Councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, could you just clarify, you mentioned, and I thought I heard you say something about this sort of development helps keep utility bills down for residents? Would you just clarify that and elaborate if you could, please?
Essentially, the over generation that sometimes occurs because of renewable energy generation occurring at times when it's not necessarily needed, so we can have over generation in the middle of the day when all the solar is generating, when it's not required. Similarly, you know, it might be a very windy day and when all the renewables are firing, that might be more energy than the grid can handle and therefore, National Grid actually has to tell generators, particularly offshore, when generators such as Tryton Knoll, who are connecting to Bickerfend, to turn off. And that results in quite significant sums sometimes, which are ultimately passed on, passed down to the consumer in terms of a standing charge on the electricity bill. So it's really us as the consumer that pays for that and that's reflected in consumers' energy bills. And batteries will help to alleviate that problem by storing the excess that is generated at times and delivering it back when it's needed, which ultimately results in a greening of the grid anyway, because you're using more of the renewable energy that's generated.
Chair, I can ask your opinion on something.
Mine?
Yeah, the fire issue is one that has been raised and of course, you can't use water with electric equipment without devastating the result, so. But what means is there, what to protect the community in the event of a major fire? Because obviously if it's electrical, there'd be a problem there.
What we have to be careful of is we're starting to stray into building regulations, all the regulations that go with these aspects that we have to accept, we ain't going to change any of those. If you want some training on that, we can arrange it, but it's not really a planning aspect.
Thank you, thank you for your advice, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, we've exhausted your knowledge, I think. Any anything to add?
Yeah, just wanted to come back in and say lighting is covered under condition eleven of the plan and the need for these applications doesn't need to be presented and the MPPF supports them. And I think paragraph two hundred and one of the MPPF mentions that fire is covered under other legislations, that there are aspects of this that are controlled out of planning, just because you get planning permission, doesn't mean you disregard the other regulations that you need to comply with.
Thank you for that. We're now open to discussion. Councillor Broton?
Thank you, Chair, I've just got a couple of points. One is on page forty six, one of five point three, one of the residents' objections is based on the waste of top grade agricultural land needed for food security. As Mr Cousins stated, that land's not been used for food security for over a hundred years, so I think that eliminates that argument. And also, Mr Gill has just said that they listened to the residents and the parish council about the traffic management plan and reworked that, so I think they've worked all they can to keep all the residents happy, so I've got no objections to this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so the recommendation.
Mr Chair.
I didn't say had, I'm saying the next thing is, we need to look at the recommendation, so for that we need a proposer, please.
I'm happy to propose that.
And a second, thank you. That was unanimous. Our third item of business today is planning application B twenty four zero three seven four on page sixty nine of the agenda. And once again, our senior planning officer, Charlie Parry, will present the item.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this application is for an energy storage system with a forty year lifespan. There has been two objections to the application and my recommendation is approval subject to conditions. The site location plan indicates that this is located to the north east of the Bickerfend substation, is where Vicarage Drove meets Vicarage Drove. And picture one gives an indication of Vicarage Drove with the electricity pylons in the background. And this is a small view of the field, just showing its current use and it's separated from the highway with the dike. The next is the site arrangement, showing the battery storage containers centrally, the transformer in the southeast corner and the attenuation pond. It's got access and which is suitable for vehicles and the purple line is the security fence around it. Again, I want to touch on national and local policies. This is a supported type of development and they do not need to justify the need for this application and the principle of development is supported. Therefore, when determining this application, it is about how they have mitigated its impact on the surrounding area and reduce the impact of the development in its countryside location. First picture indicates the bridge where the access will be constructed off directly ahead of that, this is referred to as Ash Holt Bridge. And a view of the bridge in context with its surrounding areas. The illustrative landscaping plan gives an indication of what is proposed on the site. They are only developing half the site. The site, sort of to the right as you look on the screen, is for skylark habitats as per the request of our ecologist. But you'll also see that the application has, it's going through a lot of screening, which ultimately won't stop views of the site, but will help break up views of the site and encourage habitats on, as well as achieving the ten percent uplift in biodiversity. The construction route for this application, at the time of my report, did not use either of the private haul roads. And after my report had been submitted and published, highways objected to this report. I therefore propose amendments to the condition that require a new construction route prior to the commencement of development. The other two applications have demonstrated that this can be achieved, so I have no doubt that this couldn't be achieved under this application. The condition would also have to include matters about inspecting the highways and improvements and any that are necessary. As well, highways also during the application process raise concern about the weight load of Ash Holt Bridge. This has since been cleared and they've got no objections to any of the construction vehicles using this. The flood, health and safety, this is just a screenshot from the information submitted, they've considered fire risk, fire management. There is no objection to this application in terms of fire safety, flood risk, noise subject to the acoustic fencing being included on the site and they have submitted a fire management plan as part of the application. This essentially shows where the water tanks are located, fire hydrants, and as well we have the attenuation ponds. Just to reiterate, there are no objections with this and in respect of flood risk, the same condition requiring a surface water drainage plan has been attached to the application. Running through the conditions, it's a forty year and they do have to decommission after that, returning it to its original state. There's a B and G plan, which is the statutory and it helps achieve that ten percent plan and the associated monitoring. The drainage scheme, the need for the new construction route, as well as public highway and improvements, will be attached and as well as cable routing prior to the commencement of development. Again, there's been no objections from environmental health and its impact on any residents, it's not close to them and archaeology works to be carried out as well. There have again been requests or amendments to the conditions for this scheme. These largely relate to minor things, words, and I do not consider them to be a material difference to what's already attached. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We do have speakers for this application. Our first speaker is Mr Patrick Bannon, who is speaking in support of the application. Mr Bannon, please come forward and remain at the table when you have finished your representation.
Thank you for the chance to speak.
Can you come a bit nearer to the microphone?
Thank you for the chance to speak. My name is Pat Bannon. I co-own the farm with my family, where proposed battery storage equipment will be installed if you grant permission. We're a small family farm and myself and my family all work full time jobs to maintain the farm. However, with this proposer, we could secure the future of the farm for my son and daughter. The proposed equipment will take up less than five percent of the ninety acres the farm is situated in. Over the years, we have seen some changes to Bickerfend, including wind turbines, substations and solar farms. So this is an area that is used to this sort of development and which is agreeable with my neighbours. I don't need any more of your time, I'm here as a local farm owner to ask that you allow this development to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarification needed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just want to ask you, asking Mr Bram, what benefit does it bring to you, this new development?
Security. Councillor Danny, this is not a planning aspect. Our second speaker is Mr John Hill, who is the applicant. Mr Hill, please come forward and remain seated once you've finished your representation.
Morning, Chair. My name's Johnny Hill, Senior Plan Manager, representing the applicant, Net Zero Twenty Two Limited. Your officer has covered the need and context the best, but I will summarise some key aspects of the application itself. Like the previous two schemes, this one is temporary and the equipment involved is demountable and the work's reversible. The site will be fully restored to its existing use at the end of this development. The development will be seen in the context of existing infrastructure and the development will be screened by existing and proposed trees and hedgerows. The equipment will also be coloured to ensure that it blends into the landscape. The development will deliver B and G well in excess of the ten percent required by the Environment Act. In terms of construction traffic, I can confirm we will utilise one of the haul roads and we are currently progressing negotiations with the landowners to secure this. We also accept the recommended condition regarding construction traffic routing proposed by Charlie earlier in his speech. The highway authorities also confirm they have no objection to the development alone or in combination with the other two schemes. In terms of fire safety, the proposed development will comply with National Fire Chief Council guidance and Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue Service were consulted and raised no objection to the development. You have heard from the landowner and this development will help support his farm and help him secure the viability for generations to come. The scheme has been robustly tested by your officers and technical consultees and has strong policy support at the national and local level. Your officers are recommending approval and it's my pleasure to commend this application to you, Chair and members. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any committee members, any points of clarification? In that case, thank you very much for your time. Have you any, no points to make?
No, nothing for me.
Thank you. We're now open to deliberation.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just go back to Charlie and can you clarify a little bit more exactly where and when the access route will be established?
Yeah, so this will require amendments to conditions twelve and thirteen and it will be phrased in a way that they're submitted prior to any commencement. So, I mean, ultimately, this is at the discretion of the applicant on how quickly they can submit that, but there won't be any work starting until a construction management has been submitted and approved through the appropriate, appropriate applications.
So now we need a proposer, please. Oh, sorry. Do you want to speak, councillor Danny?
Because we talk about batteries and things and we read a lot about radiations, I haven't seen any word of radiation mentioned in the previous application or this one, can you just give us an insight if there is any risk of that? Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is covered outside of the realm of planning. Just to reiterate, it's got those other regulations and requirements that it's got to accord with and that will be covered through them.
Councillor Austin?
Thank you, Chairman. I was, you inviting proposal, I'd be happy to move this, subject to the two conditions being satisfactorily agreed by the officer. So I look for a second, thank you.
Councillor Danny?
I will second the proposal, councillor Austin, thank you.
So we are, it's yes, with the conditions as discussed. Thank you, everybody. At this point, I'm suggesting we take a five minute break to come back, say bye. At this point, I'm suggesting we take a five-minute break to come back, say bye call to past eleven. Hello, everybody. Have we all returned? Our fourth item of business today is Planning Application B twenty four zero five one five on page ninety seven of the agenda. And our senior planning officer, Mr Lewis Humphries, will present the item.
Thank you, Chair. So this is an application for two hundred affordable dwellings on land south of Wayne Fleet Road. This plan's rotated, so Wayne Fleet Road runs along the left-hand side of this map. You've got Summersby Green and Summersby Way. The estates are just at the bottom of that screen. And then off to the right, you've got Princess Anne Road and Sandringham Gardens bordering the site. Just to put that in wider context, the site is here with access from the A fifty two over here. Couple of points to note. You've got Polefield Road, the campus for the school. And there is a proposed pedestrian access in this bottom corner that I'll come to later. You've got the Bowls Club here and the Premier Inn and restaurants are here. Just to give you, oh, sorry now, just before we get into the application itself, a few updates. There was a supplementary agenda circulated to members last Thursday. That included within it some additional neighbour comments, comments from the Environment Agency withdrawing their objection, comments from the IDB, which had already been accounted for in the officer report and comments from the council's ecologists, just confirming that they were satisfied with the baseline assessment for B and G, which I'll come on to later. That resulted in some amendments to the conditions that are on page one hundred and twenty nine of that supplementary agenda. Since then, we have had two additional comments, two additional comments from a neighbour who has commented previously. Those reiterate issues raised in either the supplementary agenda or the main agenda in relation to the footway drainage impacts on properties north of Wayne Fleet Road and the impacts of boundary treatments on those properties as well. That neighbour has also raised concerns about a petition that was included on an older reserve matters application in relation to the footway not being included on this, but it hasn't been formally resubmitted. So the comment numbers that we've got reflect the number of comments that we've received on this. We have also had confirmation from the NHS that they would, that they objects to the scheme. You'll see in the original, in the main agenda, the assumption was that LCC as Education Authority and the NHS would object. We've had confirmation from the NHS that that's the case. And we've had two additional comments from LCC as the highways authority, again reiterating their request for additional technical data, which is our view is covered by, more appropriately, covered by the highways agreements. They've asked for technical drawings of, technical drawings of the footway and technical drawings of the Ghost Right Hand Turn. I'm content that there is sufficient information required by the conditions to cover it from planning purposes and the extent of information that they require is more appropriate to their own processes. And lastly, they've also included some financial contribution requests that includes three hundred thousand pounds for bus passes for a year. I think that works out about fifteen hundred pounds per dwelling if they're uptaken. That doesn't secure any improvements to bus services, it only secures bus passes. And so our view is that that would be an unreasonable request in any rate, notwithstanding the viability issues that I'll discuss later. They've also requested five thousand pounds for travel plan monitoring, which was in the original section one O six, and some contributions towards bus stop improvements. I'll come on to those two bits as I cover the issues later. So just to provide a little bit of context, there was an application B seventeen O five one one for the outline erection of two hundred dwellings. That was granted permission, subject to a section one O six agreement. There was a later application for the reserve matters, so the detailed layout, appearance, scale, landscaping for that scheme. That was approved in December twenty twenty three. Last year, there was a section seventy three application to vary that approved layout, which included condensing the site. I'll show you that in the site plan a little bit later. That original section one O six agreement included the following contributions. They're detailed within the report, but it totals just under a million pounds in financial contributions plus the plus the affordable housing and some other provisions regarding play area and management of open space. For this application, we have received revised contribution requests, come out just under one point two million. So there is a slight increase on this. Those details are in there. Obviously, the LCC requests at the bottom of that slide have come in since the agenda's been published. The main purpose of this application is to secure two hundred affordable dwellings as opposed to the market, the market housing that was proposed before. Plus, they've submitted viability appraisals to demonstrate that the application or that the development can't support contributions. So they're looking effectively for this application to be granted without those section one O six contributions in terms of health and education. In simple terms, what that viability appraisal shows is it comes out with a residual land value, expected revenue minus total costs minus the developer profit. That goes off and gets, we've had that independently assessed. They've agreed with the figures that are in there. I will just add that the developer profit that's in there is quite a bit lower than we would typically be expected for this. And that residual land value figure is assessed against a benchmark land value figure that's calculated based on a standardised methodology. So it doesn't account for the amount that they actually pay for it. It is purely a calculation as a way to identify a minimum price a hypothetical landowner would accept. So if the residual land value is less than the benchmark land value, then the proposal can't support the contributions. Those figures are in the report, but basically it comes out as being less than the benchmark land value. So even without contributions, the conclusion is that the proposal's not viable. So this is the proposed layout. It is almost identical to the scheme that was approved as part of the section seventy three at the end of last year. There are some very minor variations to house types that mostly reflect an updated materials schedule. And some minor revisions to the, there's two four-bedroom dwellings in this corner that have changed. The house type designs have changed slightly more, but it's not anything that impacts the relationship between those dwellings and the existing properties or affects the impact on the overall quality of design. They have provided a materials plan that just shows the variation of materials across the site. They have two affordable providers already. It's demonstrated by these different layouts, looking at what would likely be an over fifties area in the middle. These are bungalows with communal gardens. There is a community building that's associated with those and exclusively with those, with those bungalows here. This is the wider social housing agreement. And then these additional properties were intended to be market properties in previous versions of the scheme, but will now also be affordable. This area in the bottom corner is excluded from the site. It might be that we see an application come forwards for additional housing in there, in which case in which case issues regarding contributions in connection with that and with issues of quality and design, traffic, et cetera, would all be matters for consideration at that time. Effectively, it's not a consideration here. The site is an allocated site for two hundred houses. So what we're looking at here is a layout that shows two hundred houses on an allocation, the local plan that says it can support two hundred houses. Just to, I'm not showing you all of the different house types, just to give you some brief samples. They provided some cross-sections through the street, just so you can get an idea of the type of design that we're looking at and what the street might look like. They have provided a drawing for the right-hand turn lane. The comments that we've had from Highways are that this is potentially not going to meet with their agreement. That is part of the reason that they've requested the technical data. From our point of view, provided there is a right-hand turn lane, that's what we're seeking to secure. There are conditions to that effect that would require that, A, is a first phase of development, so that the right-hand turn lane would be put in to ensure that construction traffic can access the site safely without causing issues. And that we effectively agree a scheme. So if during the course of their technical agreement with Highways, that does change, increases in size, for example, then we can agree that through that process. Uh, it also shows, um, a proposed footway, um, along the south side of Wayne Fleet Road. Um, and a pedestrian access, uh, that cuts through these two properties here. Uh, so just gonna skip back a little bit. Um, so that pedestrian access is here. Um, there have been some concerns raised about the potential for access in this corner. Um, it's not, it's not required by the scheme. It's not, it's not conditioned by the scheme. Um, there've been some concerns about potential right of access over this, but fundamentally, that's, that's not a matter for this planning application. It's not something that we require. Um, um, and it, you know, if, if, if a boundary treatment goes up or there are disagreements about whether there is a right of access, that's, that's fundamentally a, a civil matter. Um, and then this is the, um, access in the southwestern corner that I mentioned previously. Um, would, uh, there's a, there's an existing, um, existing gate here, which you'll see in the photos later. Um, and a, and a subs, uh, I think it's an angling water pumping station here. Uh, so all of that is effectively in place already. We'd look at a scheme, we'd look at conditions to require the details of the footpath. Um, uh, with lighting to ensure that that's, to ensure that that's appropriate. Um, we have a, an indicative drainage layout. Um, this was submitted as part of the reserve matters and has been resubmitted here. Um, it basically filters water, um, down through attenuation ponds towards an IDB maintained drain at the bottom of the site. Um, there have been concerns raised since reserve matters regarding the potential for, um, the potential for, for surface water to impact the rear of properties on Wayne Fleet Road. Um, that's been flagged by the residents and it's been flagged by the drainage board. Um, and there have also been concerns raised about the fact that there is a drain along the west hand boundary that is excluded from the site area, but has consistently been excluded from the site area throughout the west, throughout the site history. Um, that's a riparian drain. So, um, issues regarding maintenance and, and management of that, it, it exists outside of this planning application. Um, because of those concerns regarding Wayne Fleet Road, rather than secure the scheme as it is here, we've looked at a condition that requires details to be agreed so that we can be satisfied. Indicatively, they've looked at a filter drain from comments from the IDB along that, along that, that, um, along the rear of those properties. Um, we'll look at condition stage about whether or not that, that's sufficient and whether or not it requires any broader amendments to the drainage scheme. Um, so just to run you through some site photos, uh, this will be where the proposed access is. You can see the difference in land levels here from, uh, from the existing field, um, and, and the road level. Um, just looking the other way, um, heading on Wayne Fleet Road out towards, uh, on the A fifty two out towards Gagnes. Um, and looking back at the site, um, from further down Wayne Fleet Road, the access would come in uh, along this side, uh, along this boundary here and then took around it. Um, and you can see the existing built form of Boston in the background there. Um, this is the existing, um, existing gap on Wayne Fleet Road where the proposed footway would go in. Um, and just looking at that from the other side, so there's, there's a clear, there's a clear gap there. Um, and just to add, just to show you some of the, the, the rear of some of the properties on Wayne Fleet Road. You can see that there is a mix of, a mix of boundary treatments, uh, including some that are either, uh, either low or, or not affect, not particularly effective from a privacy point of view like this, this post and rail one here. Um, there is a condition included that would look, that would require details of boundary treatments for along here. Um, but equally, there's, there's no reason that the, there's no reason that the neighbours, the residents couldn't put their own boundary treatments up there anyway. Um, uh, this is the access through the Bowls Club, um, in the middle of that photo, um, that has caused, uh, has caused some, some of the comments. Um, again, it is not an access that we would require. Um, just looking back, uh, up towards the north of the, uh, uh, across the west, sorry, across to the west of the site. Um, the northern boundary right to the top up here, um, and then this, uh, these are the properties on Summersby Green and Summersby Way. Um, and then at the other end of that, in this corner, you've got the pedestrian cut through. Um, it runs just parallel along this, this new fence that you can see here. Um, this is the existing drainage channel on the western boundary. You can see it's recently been, it's recently been cleared by the landowner. Um, and that same from the, from the other side of the drain runs that way along, all the way along the western boundary. Um, and this is, uh, just off to the left of this photo is the, uh, is the proposed access through. It's currently fenced off, but, but we obviously require that to be opened up as part of the, as part of the detail. Um, and then the IDB drain that the site would ultimately drain into, um, along with the, the rear of those properties on uh, Princess Anne Road and Sandringham, uh, Sandringham Gardens. Um. The only other issue that is new as a result of this application is because it is a full planning application. Um, BNG applies to it, which didn't apply to the previous ones. Um, the ecologist is content that the baseline assessment is accurate, which is realistically, we need to agree at this stage. They have provided, um, indicative details for how they could achieve ten percent on site. Um, the ecologist has queried how, uh, how achievable that is. Um, and I, I have some questions about how that relates to the drainage layout. Um, but ultimately, I think it's, it's, it's either achievable on site. Um, or worst case scenario, they can provide off, they, they provide offsite contributions or credits. But that doesn't affect the determination of this planning application. That's a, that's a, the conditions, uh, conditions matter. Um, so just in summary, we're, we're recommending, uh, we're recommending approval. Um, subject to the conditions that are in the report and subject to the submission and agreement of a unilateral undertaking to secure the two hundred affordable houses. Um, there would be harm to education provision and to the NHS because that's not being offset by the contributions. Um, our view is that the benefits from the two hundred houses outweigh that. Um, and ultimately, that's, that's, that's the main consideration for members today. Um, there is the possibility that as these are affordable houses, that they are primarily going to be uptaken by people with, within Boston already who already access some of those services. Um, but obviously not necessarily in this immediate, immediate locality. So, so there, there will still be some impacts. Um, those education impacts are at secondary and sixth form level. Um, there's not expected to be an impact at primary school level, as per the comments of F County. Uh, thank you, Chair. Oh, sorry. One last, one last one, one last bit. Sorry. Um, the, we've received comments from the residents regarding this proposed footway. Um, that they, um, have access or that they have, their ownership extends to the roadway. Um, all the way up to the, all the way up to the highway frontage. That, that may well be the case, but that doesn't mean that these, that this area where this footway would go is, is not highway. It can be both and likely is both. Um, and so, uh, we've got no reason to, no reason that that footway shouldn't be provided. Um, indeed, county have been pretty clear to me informally that they consider that to be a pretty essential requirement in making sure the development is sustainable to allow pedestrian access to, to the town. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, we do have one speaker on this application. Our speaker is Mr Chris Lindley, who is the agent for the applicant. Mr Lindley, please come forward and remain seated when you finish your representation.
Okay. Uh, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to address you in support of this application at Wayne Fleet Road, Boston. My name is Chris Lindley of R G M P. I'm a chartered town planner and the agent for the applicant. This application marks an important step in the delivery of two hundred homes on this allocated housing site following a grant of outline planning permission in twenty eighteen, approval of reserve matters in twenty twenty three, and then revisions in twenty twenty four. Background provides a sound basis for your considerations with the proposal being fundamentally the same as what has been approved last year. Albeit the sole purpose here is to fully secure the development as mixed tenure affordable housing. My clients are committed to the comprehensive delivery of affordable housing here. They've worked hard with the council's housing strategy team in Homes England, identified willing partners in the shape of housing associations ready to take the homes and local contractors ready to construct them. There is an acute need for affordable housing in Boston with over seventeen hundred households listed on the council's register. The council's ongoing support is paramount to the delivery of this scheme that will provide local people in housing need a modern, purpose-built and energy-efficient dwelling to call home. Many of these local people already rely upon local services and facilities, which will mitigate some of the requests for financial contributions made by the NHS and the county. The scheme includes a mix of bungalows and mazinets alongside two, three and four bedroom homes. They'll be homes for shared ownership and rent suitable for families and older people alike. Offsite highway improvements remain part of this proposal, along with open spaces which will be further enhanced now to provide biodiversity net gain. Final technical approvals for highways and drains are advancing, with this process commenced under previous approvals. Unfortunately, the delivery of this scheme with its compelling benefits comes at a cost. Commercial viability is a challenge and the development as proposed today is simply not financially viable in its current form. An assessment of viability has been considered by your officers and an independent specialist. As noted in your officers' report, it's been accepted that the scheme is not viable should financial contributions be levered upon it. The local plan allows for situations like this. And in these specific circumstances, your officers rightly advise that planning permission should be forthcoming, subject to a revised set of conditions and a unilateral undertaking to secure the delivery of the affordable housing. Given the baseline established by the previous approvals, there will otherwise be no harm to, on any matters of acknowledged importance. And I respectfully commend the officer recommendation to you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning, and I'd be happy to provide any points of clarification as required.
Thank you for that. Uh, does anybody wish to ask any points of clarification? I'm amazed. Well done, everybody. Oh, councillor Danny.
Thank you for the speech. Uh, I just want to ask you something. Is there any social housing in the development? Will it be in the social housing?
Yes, councillor, the, the, the two hundred dwellings all fall within the definition of affordable housing. Um, affordable housing is quite a broad definition these days. And that requires a mix of tenures. Within the two hundred dwellings, approximately twenty five percent would be for shared ownership. And the remaining seventy five percent would be for what we call social rent. All of those are managed by, um, housing associations. And within that, a number of the properties are for later living. And they're bungalows for later living. And then there's a, a, a range of house types and sizes to meet single people and also the needs of families in the area that we understand are at need of housing. And that approach and mix has been agreed with the housing team at the council.
Thank you, Mr Lindley. I can return to your seat.
Thank you, Chair.
Have we anything, Lewis, that you'd like to add? So we're now open for deliberation. Anybody who would like to ask anything? We hear anything? Councillor Woodley?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. And reading through the application, what I noticed is, first of all, there seem to be quite a lot of objections to, um, the drainage side of things. It says, I'll pick out page one hundred and two. It says concerns regarding the maintenance of the dike along the western boundary that's currently maintained by the landowner, but not included in the application site. Seems a strange thing that, that the boundary itself ends before the ditch or whatever it is. And that seems strange. I, I asked a question, who's going to be responsible for maintaining this ditch? It goes on, concerns about access to maintain the dike along the western boundary. So, and that appears elsewhere in this application, doesn't it? I think I've read it elsewhere. It's gonna, it's, it is a concern that, um, this particular area is not in the, in the application, but actually has an impact upon it. Because of course, I mean, if it's very heavy rainfall, well, on a normal field, the rain, you know, dissipates into the ground. But when you have, you know, a large number of buildings, two hundred buildings and roads and so on, that rain's going to come off somewhere. And that ditch is the obvious place it's going to flood, flood into. So the, um, I, I find it difficult to see why this, this dike itself is not included in the, um, application. And who's going to maintain it and so on. I, I'm not, not clear about how the properties on the other side of this ditch are going to be protected as a result of this. So I think there needs to be some clarification from the officers if possible. Um, as to how properties on the other side of this, um, development are going to be protected. And how, um, maintenance this dike is going to be carried out, because it's going to become very, very critical, I would say. Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, let me just, let's come back through to these drainage layouts. So the ditch runs, the ditch runs here. It is outside of the red line, but it has historically always been outside of the red line. Um, it is not an IDB managed drain, so the responsibility for maintenance is, is with the landowner. Um, whether or not that landowner is solely the agricultural, uh, that the current agricultural tenant or, or owner. Um, whether that's shared with the properties is ultimately not really a planning consideration. Um, what, um, what we've, and, and that, that riparian ownership responsibility would continue going forwards. So if it is included within the, within the sale of the lands for this development, then that would, that riparian responsibility would pass to the landowner. Um, realistically, you're gonna look at, you're all gonna look at, um, some sort of management and maintenance of these, of these drains, um, of these attenuation ponds. Um, but what the drainage layout currently shows is that surface water will be fed to these attenuation ponds. Um, and is then, is then piped down to the south. So any surface water runoff from the development itself would, would accumulate here within the red line. Um, and so what I wouldn't expect, once the development is complete, that any, that any surface water from the application site would, would have a particularly major impact on that dike.
Can I come back, Chairman?
Well, I think that's kind of unsatisfactory, actually, really. I'd have, if I lived on the other side of that, uh, ditch or whatever, I'd be particularly worried. Because, you know, if it's, it's very heavy rain, that water will land on the concrete and tarmac of the building site. And it's going to run somewhere. And in very heavy rain, we're expecting very heavy rain going forward, aren't we? This is the first issue of climate change, very serious issue. And the offflow from concrete and tarmac is going to affect properties next to it. I'd be very worried if I lived on the, on the other side of that red line. Very worried indeed.
I don't think your answer's satisfactory. Thank you.
There, there is a condition, um, condition for effectively requires a full, a full drainage scheme, as if they've, they've, they've not submitted any details. Um, in part, that's to make sure that, that those, that those changes to the northern boundary, um, are, are adequately, are adequately, uh, included within the drainage scheme. Um, but as I say, this, this would all filter through, this would all filter through to those, to those attenuation ponds, which would be, which are, which are right up against or in close proximity to this. So it shouldn't then impact. Um, notwithstanding that, there is, there, there is that condition for the drainage scheme. So I would expect it all to come forwards as part of that package. Um, and if that is a, if, if that's an area of particular concern for, for members, then, um, you know, it, it, it should all be, it should all be covered within the details of that condition.
Thank you, Chairman. On another matter, there's section one O six agreements. Would appear that because it's going to have, um, all affordable housing, is that the reason why there's going to be no section one O, one O payments to the NHS and LCC and so on? Is that the reasoning behind that? Because it's all affordable? Therefore, there should be no, um, payments? Is that the reason?
Um, no, there, there's no request for the, there's no request for the one O six payments because the viability appraisal suggests that the development can't support them. Um, ultimately, that's the, that's the balance, that's the consideration for you today is whether or not the benefit for those two hundred affordable houses outweighs that potential harm to, to health and education because we're not getting those contributions.
So in effect, everybody else's opinion has to pay for it, basically. The responsibility then is best on everybody else in the town, isn't it? Yeah, that's my, my feeling about it. We don't know where people are going to come to live at these properties. It's an assumption they're going to come from the local area, but we don't. but we don't know that. You come from anywhere in the country to live in Boston, and people do. So it we can't be certain of that. So therefore, you know, the lack of section one of six payments affects, you know, everybody in this area. You have more people come in, more children come in, you need more school places and all the rest of it, and no contribution. Is that correct?
I mean, that's the that's the that's the debate for you to have, for you to have amongst yourselves.
Yeah, just to add to what Lewis said, which there has been an application on this site before this had permission. It is a site in the local plan. It's been deemed that the contributions, the policy compliant contributions, which would include usually your twenty percent affordable NHS education contribution where they're required, is not viable. So there's an issue with this site in general terms, in terms of its viability. What the applicant's chosen to do is come forward with a fully affordable scheme of two hundred. As Lewis rightly says, the viability shows that delivering those two hundred also inevitably, given the site previously approved is not viable, is also not viable for giving those contributions. So as Lewis rightly says, the balance here is about the benefits of two hundred affordable homes on this site against the harm arising from no contributions towards other such things as education and NHS contribution. That is the balance for members of the committee today.
Oh, councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two concerns on this project. The first one is the layout of the houses and then the in and out of that site. As we know, Wainfleet Road is a very busy road and it's not very wide. So therefore, with two hundred houses, we may have probably eight hundred cars, probably more. So it will put an impact on on the traffic around it. So we should probably consider to have more talks with the highways to enlarge or make it better. That's the first thing for me. The second thing, we haven't got probably a pedestrian path, which is people can use, mothers, kids to come out of that, except the one which is, I think, the back of the houses, which is it's by the Anglia Water, owned by Anglia Water, if I'm not mistaken. And if we have any kids going to schools, then we need to have a proper, you know, paths for them to walk through, because yeah, and we have only, I think, Tallfield Secondary and we have Tower Road School Primary. So it will be a lot of walking around, there will be a lot of pedestrians around. So therefore, my concerns pedestrian path should be probably talked about there, and I think the highway should probably be pushed to make the road much better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Chair. The access and the traffic impacts were assessed as part of the outline application back in two thousand and eighteen. Fundamentally, that's not, that's not any different, and the extent, that and the section seventy-three are both extent planning permissions that could be implemented, regardless of the impact, regardless of of what happens here today. There are conditions that require highway, off-site highways improvements, including the Ghost Island Right Turn and the pedestrian footway along Wainfleet Road. The supplementary agenda also includes condition twenty-seven, which looks at details for for pedestrian access in the southwest corner, which I believe is what councillor Danny was referring to.
Councillor Bedford.
Thank you, Chairman. There's quite a few things with this application that really do concern me. Going back to when the seedlands was built up in the far corner, all that area which used to be the seed trial ground, back into Somersby Green and so on, used to flood. As part of that application, we got a condition at a pumping station with and forth. East Pumping Station had to be constructed, which cured all that problem in that area. Now we're looking at allowing a five-meter and not a nine-meter rule alongside this unadopted dike, because let's face it, yes, the farmer have now cleaned it out, but we all know within two years it'll be growing up again. And water needs to flow, and it can't flow if it cannot be maintained. It's all right saying on condition of sale is going to be a riparian ownership. Do the people who live on Somersby Green and further down agree that they are riparian owners of that dike? Because until an ownership is established, and there needs to be a nine-meter rule these days to get the size of equipment down there. You know, the days of a man going down with a fork and a spade to dig it out is long gone, and we need to be able to get good equipment down there. That's one objection in my mind. Another one is the fire, Lincolnshire Fire's response to the fact that the road isn't going to be constructed to a good enough standard to bear a fire engine, which is absolutely crazy. What about our refuse freighters? They're heavier than what fire engines are, so we're trying to build or permit a substandard road in that development. Social housing shouldn't accept anything lower than normal standards, and that certainly is not the normal standard. The contributions issue, yes, that's down to us as a council to decide. Sorry, in my mind, those contributions should stay. If the scheme doesn't stack up, then it doesn't stack up. The landowner either wants too much money for it or the developer is prepared to pay and make it viable, one way around or another. There's so many things in this that, in my mind, don't stack up, and I cannot support it as it is. We haven't even got, in the conditions as I read it, to be coming out onto the A fifty-two, a provision of a wheel wash for vehicles going in and out there. There should be. That is a very, very heavily used road, and anybody who uses it regularly knows that every time that field is harvested, the stones, there's also, it's on the road. So if you're having construction vehicles going in and out there, there should be a wheel wash every time anything goes in and out that site until it's constructed. So I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but as it is, I cannot support this.
Would you like to comment?
Yes, please, Chair. The the drain to the west, as I say, it's outside of the red line, so we can't look at realistically, conditions that relate specifically to that. We do have this, we do have the the drainage conditions, as I mentioned previously. In terms of fire and rescue, they have asked for a specification for the roads that is above what is what is typical. That's realistically not not a matter for, not a matter for us. That's that's a matter for them and for realistically a matter between them and highways as to the the adoptable standard that's that's used. There is a recommendation in there for for high, for for fire hydrants. That's not included as a condition, but if members felt that was appropriate, we could add to that. On the points regarding viability, all I would say is that it is an allocated site. There is the the two hundred houses that are in there contribute towards our five-year housing land supply. And the benchmark land value that's used to used to determine whether or not the scheme can support contributions or not is based on a standard method and shouldn't I take into account the actual price that is that is being paid for the land? And very lastly, on the wheel wash point, there is include, there is a pre commencement construction management plan conditioning at number three, and point G on there requires details to prevent mud being deposited on the surrounding highway, which typically expects to be wheel washing. Thank you.
Councillor Broughton.
Yeah, that one's working. Thanks, sir. Yeah, just a couple of things. The first one is obviously on the supplementary. It's interesting to see that the Environment Agency have now withdrawn their objection on the recommendation of a condition to secure flood mitigation. And just going on, obviously, there's only been five objections, and reading through some of these, I find some quite prejudicial, especially the one of fear of antisocial behaviour and crime is associated with the level of affordable housing. Well, how can anybody judge that, especially with, which I'm really keen to say is this, especially with the over fifties proportion of this application? Boston needs these types of social housing and they need these, especially for the over fifties as well. And the comment about development needs to see bigger houses for doctors from the hospital. I just, that to me is just totally irrelevant, has got nothing to do with anything. I've got doctor friends who live in one-bedroom flats. So why would assuming that because they're a doctor that they need a five-bedroom house is beyond me? So I'm fully supportive of this application.
Councillor Welbury.
Ah, thank you. Just need a bit of confirmation. Under section one oh six, is it correct that there is no contribution to the highway by the developer?
There's no financial contribution, but they would be expected to to do the off-site works to the the Ghost Island Right Turn and the footway.
Right. And just confirmation of point twenty on page one one seven, the that was mentioned by councillor Bedford, that there is only five meters allowed, the ditch on the southern boundary, not nine meters. That is correct.
I don't actually have the IDB comments in front of me, but I do know that they didn't raise any, they didn't raise any issues with the southern boundary. And and I do know that the applicants were in the process of getting their technical, the technical approval as part of that already.
So they were happy with the five meters?
The IDB were happy about access arrangements for for the southern, for the southern drain. What they have recommended is that, or they have suggested that it might be worth considering similar proposals for the western boundary. But again, as that as that kind of falls outside of, that falls out of that, falls outside of the site, we're looking at the drainage scheme via condition. I've not included anything specific in relation to that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councillor Sharp.
Thank you. Is it possible just to see a picture of the houses again, please? And can you confirm there's no steps for access up to the front and then into the rear gardens? Are they just from the path into the house, please?
Sorry, is it, was it, what kind of plan is it you want in the the elevation?
Just look at the pictures of the houses. I think my eyesight's going, sorry.
I haven't included all, I haven't included all of the details for the house types. I can track some down for you if you want. There are a lot of house types on, a lot of different house types that are proposed here. For the most part, no, I don't believe that there are stepped accesses, but there is a condition that requires the site levels across the site to be submitted and agreed. And the flood risk, the condition that the EA have recommended and that's included within there is specific to finished floor levels. So what we would probably look at is that that is is not stepped access, but that that obviously needs to be taken into account, the drainage scheme, to ensure that that runoff or any additional runoff as a part of that raising of land levels doesn't impact neighbouring properties.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure they're accessible for all. Thank you.
Councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I heartily agree with councillor Broughton. I was absolutely appalled by that comment that people in affordable housing are more likely to indulge in antisocial behaviour. We can't make that sort of assumption at all. You might almost say sometimes it is perhaps the reverse. Anyway, I'll go on. If I'm right, there's no such thing as a catchment area for schools anymore. You go to the school that's got the room to take you. So just because you live very near a school doesn't give you any more right to go to that school, does it then, somebody on the opposite side of town? I say that knowing that several, you know, certain schools are popular and then other schools are popular, but it's a case of first come, first served, provided they can get to these schools and the schools prepared to have these people. Right, and I'm not committing myself on how I'm going to to vote at the moment. Please, can we have better on-screen images? I mean, I've recently been to the optician. I've no problem with my eyesight, but I am struggling, I really am, to see some of these on-screen images. Okay, and finally, riparian situations. Well, I've got an awful lot of estates in my ward that have riparian ownership. I'm not aware of any issues that have occurred in them. I think off the top of my head, of the Isaac Newton estate, there's riparian issues, or there could be riparian issues, but we had them when we did Heron Park the other year, and there wasn't supposedly, and I've not heard as a ward member of any issues. So is this likely to be any different? I'm just posing questions for people to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, go in now, please.
Yeah, just to you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the drainage issue is a concern that's been raised by a number of members, and I understand that. I understand the reasons why. I can only really say what's been said, that condition four is on there. It's a standard condition to do with surface water drainage, and those details will need to be submitted and considered. We will consult with the IDB, the lead local flood authority is the county, and it will have to be an acceptable drainage system that works. If something comes forward that doesn't, it won't get approved, quite frankly and simply. The other point to make is around, the point that's been made around ownership, et cetera, that is a civil matter. Again, anything to do with any other acts like the London Drainage Act involving the IDB, they are outside of the planning system. So a simple point I want to make there is, if we approve something, it's not acceptable and doesn't get consent somewhere else, of course, they won't be able to implement the permission. Simple as that. So so in all those regards, I don't think there's much more we can add from a planning perspective on drainage.
Well, I'd just like to add my two pennies to the five-meter and nine-meter. I don't understand how we design an estate to finish up with a five-meter access down a waterway. The bylaws say it's got to be nine meters. Councillor Bedford might be able to back me up on that. He's much more experienced on waterways, et cetera, than I am. But I understand that the bylaws say it's got to be a nine-meter access. And the Drainage Board can come along and clear anything that's been constructed, planted, whatever, that stops them getting a nine-meter access. So how can we finish up with a design that only has a five-meter access? That they're going to come down and wipe all their, all their fence out and after garden? How do we finish up in this situation, and where will we be in a year's time when they've been down with the bulldozer?
And so there is no reason that we can't grant planning permission for development within within that nine meters, absolutely no reason at all. That's an issue, it's an IDB issue fundamentally. If they choose to relax that easement, and they're content that they can still access it for they can still access it for maintenance, and they grant the IDB consent that's needed for the drainage, then that's that's fundamentally not really a planning matter. There are questions about about maintenance of of that dike, and I think there is a question about how that relates to how that relates to access. But fundamentally, I don't think that if, we've not had objections from the IDB at any point through the application process, including going back to the reserve matters, they've been, they've been content with the layout of the site, where the proposed attenuation ponds and the relationship with the the relationship with that drain on the southern boundary kind of throughout the application process. And if they're content with that, then I don't really see that there's a, there's an issue there.
Just to you, Chairman, just to add something I've done elsewhere in the past, we could, and it may even Just to you, chairman, just to add something I've done elsewhere in the past, and there may even be one on there. Apologies, I haven't seen it. There's no reason, should members choose to approve the application, that we put an informative on, reminding them of their needs to contact the IDB and the things they have to discharge under the London Drainage Act.
Yeah. I know that it's a big issue, but are we saying then that because the drainage board has not said we object to it, that they're prevented from coming down in a year's time and saying, I want that fence and garden all moving? Is that what we're saying? Because they've not said we don't like it, then they've excluded themselves from being able to act on the nine-metre rule in future?
No, that's not what I'm saying. We can't speak on behalf of the IDB, obviously. What this is about is the use of the land, and as Lewis has said, there's no reason why this can't be permitted as a use of land. Flip it on its head. If you were to say to me, Phil, we should be refusing this because it's within five metres or it's five metres rather than nine, that wouldn't stack up anywhere at Planning Appeal because the planning inspector would say that's not a planning matter, a civil matter between the applicant and the IDB, is my view, unless Lisa wants to correct me legally, she doesn't. So that's my clear view. I can only say what we've said is, it's five metres, not nine, which Lewis has said. There is no objection from the IDB, but the very clear message, I think, should the planning committee approve this, if that's what they choose to do, to the applicant and the representative in the room, is they need to be making contact with the IDB to make sure they can implement this permission as they see fit.
councillor Evans.
Thank you, chairman. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but in backing up what the chairman has said, I've attended many with and forth IDB meetings, and the nine-metre question comes up regularly. And they are quite vociferous about maintaining it. So your point of why do they draw up plans like this that clearly are five metres when nine is required certainly stacks up, thank you.
councillor Woodley.
Thank you, chairman, I'm sorry to come back. I noticed in the report actually on page 108, 7.25, it says paragraph 136 of the MVPF advocates that where a development is of board sign that fails to take the opportunities available to improve the character and equality of an area, planning permission should be refused. I'd like to know really how this particular development actually would improve the quality and character of the area. It's obviously a different structure of housing from all the housing around the boundary. Do you have a change actually of character in that area as a result of this development, don't you? Thank you.
Through you, mister chairman. Obviously, design rather subjective in terms of considerations of that. What I would say in simple terms, I suppose, is that, and again, Lewis has mentioned this, there's an extended permission on this site with a broadly similar design and layout. So this council has approved a design and layout extremely similar, if not almost identical, to what you see on screen. So I don't think there's any legs in terms of refusal reason on those grounds for that reason.
Any further comments?
Now, committee members, I'm looking for a proposal to pass this application.
Well, you're still happy to propose this application.
Do we have a second? councillor Austin.
I'll second that, subject to appropriate conditions or informatives, thank you.
Nine-metre aspects is.
Pardon, sorry.
As far as the five-metre stroke nine-metre access is concerned.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, sorry, I obviously can't speak again now because I've spoken already, but I think of Heron Park, you've got the one, you've got gardens one side, but they haven't got any high fences. You could get the machinery down, but I wouldn't want to know if, you see, this is the point, I can't speak again. So I'm saying with that, that's why, I'm sorry, chairman, I'm repeating what I said, subject to appropriate conditions. Thank you.
That's all I'm asking, is the conditions you want to implement are within respect to the nine-metre, five-metre aspect we've been discussing. Yes, thank you. So, all those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? Is that fair?
Thank you. So that means the application is now not been passed in accordance with the officer's recommendation. So we now need an alternative proposal for consideration.
Just to add to that, hopefully for some help. Obviously, it's not been approved, as Lisa said, so the alternatives now are refusal on robust planning grounds, or indeed if there are matters that the committee think could be overcome or need further clarification that may lead to an approval, then of course you are open to defer and instruct officers to seek further information on those. So I think they are your two choices.
Does everybody understand that? You want to have another go, Phil?
I'll have another go, but I might say the same thing again. You voted to not approve the application, clearly, but the application needs a resolution and a decision. So that can only be one of now a refusal. And I don't know what grounds that's on, but obviously that's for members to decide. Or, of course, you could seek to defer it if you believe there are issues that led to you not being able to support the application, that if you instruct officers to go back to the applicant to seek to overcome, that may. So those are your two options. I don't think I can be much clearer.
councillor Bedford.
Chairman, I'm quite happy to move deferral because there's so many points in this. Yes, we need the houses and it's in the local plan, but we need the nine-metre rule sorting, we need the ownership of the dike. It's no good turning around and saying that, you know, it's half here, it's half there, when everybody's saying, well, it's not mine. But that's really what it boils down to. Also, the road standard, you know, the links fire and rescue have a point that you're going to permit, or as it is, a substandard road. And we all know what happens with a substandard road. The next thing you know, it's flooded down the two tracks where the vehicles go. So all that needs sorting out and then bringing back, and that then makes sense. So I'm quite happy to move deferral.
So just on this nine-metre easement rule, the drain that is IDB maintained is this drain here. The nine-metre easement, this one on the right-hand side of your screen, the only development that is potentially within the easement there is this additional attenuation pond, the roadway, and these houses are well outside of the nine metres. And there is, this grassland here provides the access arrangement, and the IDB and their comments have not objected to the proposal. Sorry. So yeah, just wanted to clarify that. This drain that's causing the issues on the western boundary is not an IDB drain. There is no bylaw regarding, there is no bylaw there that they could enforce against regarding distance or development.
councillor Woodley.
Thank you, chairman. I will second councillor Bedford's recommendation. And with the extension, I don't think this development fits with the area that surrounds it. And it's how, this 7.25, where development is such that it fails to take the options available to improve the character and quality of an area. I don't see how this development actually fits with the surrounding area. But I second councillor Bedford's recommendation to defer.
So are there any other aspects we need to investigate or put conditions to? Are we all happy we've got everything down?
councillor Welbury.
Can you just clarify the conditions that we are looking to have more information? Getting a bit lost here, I'm afraid.
Right, I have a note of the nine-metre easement issue, the dike ownership, road standard being a substandard in the comments from the Links Fire and Rescue, and then we've had an additional bit that it's not fit for the area, it doesn't keep in standard. So I have four points.
Want to come back?
Yeah, so the details regarding the nine-metre easement, as I say, that only applies to the southern boundary. The drainage board have not raised any issues with that. To be blunt, I'm not entirely sure exactly what further information it is that you would want me to go away and put back to you. The same with the ownership of the dike. We can't request the details of the land ownership there. It falls outside of the site and there is a riparian, that it's to be maintained by the landowner. There is the condition on there that requires the detail for the drainage scheme and the maintenance of that to be agreed. And similarly, the road standard is, let me just double check, but I believe that there is a condition in there that looks at confirming which details are to be, which areas of road would be built to adoptable standards and which would be which would be maintained privately. But realistically, that main, that central access road and this spur down to the south appear to be adoptable standard, and that's LCC County's standard for the development. The points from fire and rescue, they want a standard of roads that's capable of supporting vehicles above that. But it's above and beyond ultimately the technical details that we would ask for. There's no, in the same way that I've not recommended we include conditions for the technical details for the footway or the technical details for the ghost right turn, I haven't and wouldn't as standard recommend the technical details for the estate roads because it's fundamentally where they're going to be adopted, a matter for the highways authority.
So now we're asking then, for all those in favour of deferment, please show now. Those against? Abstentions? So that deferral is carried. I presume there'll be some discussion now, Phil, and we'll bring it back. Thank you, everybody, it's not an easy one, that. I understand the, yeah, the worry about it. Okay, so you're going to leave us now, councillor? Just a minute, we haven't finished. Alison, councillor Austin, we haven't finished yet. Don't worry about us. Okay, have we got quorum? So, anybody else want to run off? Our fifth and final item of business today is planning application B240516 on page 121 of the agenda, and our planning officer, Miss Megan Epton, will present the item.
Thank you, chairman. So the application we've got in front of us today is a notification under section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. Works are trees within a conservation area. Normally, these applications don't really reach committee. The only reason it's come here is because it's councillor Welbury's application. It's for works of two trees within West Home Church Lane Swine's Head, within the Swine's Head Conservation Area. And my recommendation is to not make a tree preservation order in case of both of the trees. So we have a T1 is a pine tree on the eastern boundary and then a lime tree within the rear garden. I've got photos of both of them. In the case of these applications, the focus is understanding the public amenity value that the trees provide and whether the works would result in a harm that is significantly impactful on that value. So to break that down, is you look at the amenity value that the trees have and the works proposed, and effectively, if those works are considered impactful on the value of the trees, then you either make a tree preservation order and don't allow the works to occur, or you do not make a tree preservation order and allow the works to continue. So for the pine tree, it's general maintenance works, removing dead wood and ivy and thinning the canopy by approximately 30%. It's quite a prominent tree in the street scene, but the judgment is that the works are acceptable, they're not going to harm the amenity value, and therefore do not make a tree preservation order. And then the second tree is a lime tree. The works are more significant than what are on post for the first tree, but the general stance on that is that they're not going to harm the amenity value of the tree. And when viewing it in context, that the amenity value of the tree and the proposed works wouldn't warrant issuing a tree preservation order in the case of this tree either. So it's proposed to Parlourd, remove the ivy and some growth at the base of the tree. And viewing it in its entirety, it's not considered warranted to make a tree preservation order in case of the lime tree. So as a whole, the meaning of value of both the trees wouldn't be significantly or adversely harmed. And so therefore, we're not going to make a tree preservation order in case of either of the trees, and we're going to allow the works to occur, and that's the recommendation.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay. All those in favour? Anybody against? Thank you.